Before we call me in the order, board members. When I joined the board last week, last week on the phone, it was often difficult to hear some of you. So, and I think when I was watching the screen, some of you didn't get up to the mic. So if I happen to notice that tonight, I'm going to raise my hand instead of interrupting. I'm going to ask you to move to the mic. So if you see me with my hand up, that's why. So it was difficult to hear some of you. So with that, let's call me in the order. Jenny, roll call.
Amy Riddle Swanson.
Here.
Charlie Schneider.
Here.
Mark Pillman.
Here.
Angie Skilling.
Here.
Carl Palmer.
Here.
Abe Smith.
Here.
Dominique Stewart.
Here.
Rachel Henderson.
Here.
Dale Dalton.
Here.
All right, pleasure lead. Pleasure lead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the glory of our holy saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our mission statement, the school district of the Menominee area, by embracing the unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community, is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Does anybody have any suggested changes or revisions to the agenda? Seeing none, move on to recommendations and commendations.
We have one tonight with Dominique, I think.
Tonight's commendation is for Lindsay Horbiton. Lindsay is a highly competent and caring professional who is an exemplary role model to students, staff, and families at Oakland. She is highly respected by her peers for being the glue that holds things together for students who have challenges at school and at home. Her office door is always open, and she makes herself readily available when she is needed. Lindsay always has a big smile on her face, a positive attitude, and she is one of the first to step forward to help out. She guides the student council, known as RAK, the Random Acts of Kindness, to be positive influencers in the school and community. Oakland is fortunate to have Lindsay working with students, staff, and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. On to community communications. We have one this evening. So the opinions, beliefs, and viewpoints expressed by the various speakers during communications do not necessarily reflect the opinions, beliefs, and viewpoints of individual board members, the board as a whole, or the school district of the Menominee area, nor do they reflect the official policies of the SDMA. With that, Mrs. Pillman.
Hi, I'm Julie C. Pillman, and I reside at 235 Third Avenue East, Apartment 5, in Nap, Wisconsin, which is part of the Menominee School District. Dr. Zdowski and members of the board. Do you remember the Southern gentleman who wanted to know the cook really well before he ate her chicken noodle soup? Why did he want to know the cook really well? That way he knew if he needed to watch for bones in the soup. He could gladly eat the soup if he could trust the cook to do her own due diligence. We as a community hire educators to mold the minds of our precious children. We want to be able to trust those teachers to teach well. But we have been finding bones in the soup. We have been finding books that indoctrinate our children with the LGBTQ ideology in our libraries. That ideology is built on complete lies. For example, if you feel like a girl when you're really a biological boy, you can change your gender. You can use the opposite washroom and demand your teacher change the name you are called or use different pronouns. This kind of ideology is not just presented in our books, but also in our gender policy plans. How did this happen? How did these bones get into the soup? I would submit that we have been hiring teachers that lack discernment and character. We can no longer trust the cooks. My observation is that once these books are in the library, it takes much effort to remove them. We need to take a good look at where these wrong ideas are coming from. I am afraid that our own teachers are being indoctrinated at the universities to not just accept, but promote this kind of teaching. They are cautioned against being so discriminatory as to speak against the lie. The lie is that LGBTQ ideology is harmless, good, and wholesome. It is not. It is evil and dangerous to the minds of our children. School board, I notice on the agenda today you will be going through a process of hiring teachers for certain positions. Ask lots of questions. Read between the lines. Choose courageous educators who are not afraid to speak out against wrong, even at great risk to their jobs if necessary. Remember, one of the jobs you as a school board were elected to do was to help choose our educators. Hire teachers with high moral standards. We are very sensitive to the fact that we want teachers of sound character who will teach our children in the truth. We want librarians with a discernment to keep the bones out. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Pillman.
Charlie, if you don't mind, I'd just like to make a comment. You know, I think every single meeting of the board, myself, we respectfully listen to comments. And, you know, I certainly understand that different people have different ideologies. And, you know, people may agree or disagree with school district policy. And I respect that. What I have a difficult time respecting is people making implications about our teaching staff. We have great teachers here in Menominee with very high moral character. And I would take our teaching staff, against any teaching staff, anywhere. So from that standpoint, you know, if we want to talk policy and stuff, fine. But to imply that our teachers are not of sound moral character is something that I'm not going to stand by and listen to.
Thanks, Joe. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I agree. It's very difficult to listen when the moral character of a lot of people is being called into court. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I had Carl and Angie, or someone over here as well.
Angie Hammond.
All right. All right, so on the consent agenda this evening, we have a couple of retirements. Kristen Humphrey, Principal at Nap, and Leslie Leparen, Special Education Teacher at Oakland. And no new hires. The auto state orchestra trip on the agenda again. And it looks like that's about it, right? Yeah, that's it. So any discussions, questions?
If we vote against this, does the principal have to say?
I've always wondered how that would work. Okay, and I guess Salsi passed his name. And Mrs. Humphrey, thank you for your years of service. We appreciate it. And good luck as you step into that next endeavor wherever you're going. Okay, and we have one item on the action agenda. That is the 30-year facility plan. An emotional proof?
I'll move to approve the 30-year facility plan. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Rachel and a second by Angie. Any discussion, questions?
First of all, I think we said this last time, but I'm extremely impressed at how detailed and thoughtful this three-year plan is. It's really amazing, especially after going to the conference last week and seeing how many districts were just starting to even think about long-term planning of this sort. It's really amazing. One thing I was wondering, after some discussions with people at River Heights, I know that they have a playground equipment piece, the castle, which is, you know, really well-loved, but very, you know, getting up there. And I know the PT others wondering about what the replacement options are and upkeep and things like that. And I was thinking about that when sharing the capital improvement plan. Didn't really see recessed equipment or playground stuff. So I'm curious, you know, I don't want to disrupt this plan today, but if we should think about putting those into future plans or if there should be a separate plan for playground equipment. Things that, you know, over a few years are pretty stable, but over long-term decades certainly need repair or replacement and upkeep, or what options are in this cases.
Yeah, thanks, Aven. I appreciate the question. I am happy to share that our elementary principals have been meeting, I know that was an item that they brought up this fall, about trying to talk about what the future of playgrounds could be. Typically, playground expansion and improvements have been made through fundraising efforts or through grant opportunities. And there are actually a number of grant opportunities that come from time to time. So I think we need to continue to look for that. At the same time, especially when we talk about River Heights and the huge castle there, you know, I think that might be something as we look to future capital improvement plans, that that be something that might make sense. We aren't there for this year, put in this year, but I do think that we have it on our list for a potential expansion in the future.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussion?
Reading through the summary, it looks like there's no changes from when we looked at this two weeks ago. Is that right?
Okay. One last call. Rachel, it looks like she has a question. And the motion passes nine to zero. Moving on to the discussion items. Professional development.
So tonight's professional development report is going to be done by Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Brian Seglin. Brian, go ahead and take it away.
All right, thank you very much. So to start out with, I'm happy to talk through some of the highlights as far as professional development over the last year and as we go through this year. One of the things that I'll say is working with staff to collaboratively plan professional development is probably one of the parts of my responsibilities that I enjoy the most. I feel we're very fortunate in the district to be of large size, to be able to provide what I consider to be a very comprehensive and broad range of options for professional development for staff in all employment categories throughout the course of the year. One of the things that I'll point out in the background, also in the public comment here, is when we take a look at this year's professional development, we conducted a follow-up survey for our opening PD as well as the one that took place here on the 16th of January. And when we look at those two, I'm happy to report that 89% of our staff agreed that professional development days are beneficial to their role in the SDMA. The last time we did this, we used some school perceptions data and a survey that we had up there. And I think that one was at 87%. And generally, we're very solid in the 80s when we asked for, you know, whether or not staff find them to be beneficial. That's not to say that we don't have areas for growth or improvement. A few of the things that we've identified as strengths in our professional development programming is a nice mix of nationally-recognized presenters. This fall, we had Weston Kishnik who came in. I believe our response rate for his sessions were in the, solidly in the 90%. People found that to be very beneficial, which is extremely high when it comes to that. But we also provide, in addition to bringing in national speakers and educational professionals, we pride ourselves on providing some flexibility in how we deliver professional development. And that was highlighted when our staff responded. One of the things that we've been doing over the last several years, I believe it was our seventh or eighth one that we've done in a row, our January PD day, we did that in EdCamps format. And that's referred to as personalized professional development. That day was entirely, the sessions that we had in the morning, I should say, were entirely suggested by our staff and largely led by our staff throughout the day. A few things that have been identified for some potential growth opportunities within the district. Our staff continue to ask about opportunities for attending professional development outside of the district, whether that's in person or virtually. And we try to balance that. It is one thing that presents some challenge. You know, one of the things we prioritize is making sure that our staff are in front of our students as much as possible. And then access to substitutes when staff are out of the district has presented a challenge for the last several years. So we continue to evaluate how we can do that without sacrificing time for our students as well. And then when we take a look at our professional development for hourly staff, specifically our parent educators, that's an area that we continue to take a look at and how can we improve in there. We've engaged them in a variety of ways. But I would say that's probably the area that we have the greatest opportunity for growth is physician, or professional development and learning opportunities specific to their positions. And as we have new staff onboard, one of the sessions that we received a lot of positive feedback, our Director of HR, Samantha White, provided some PD on our last one. And we received some very positive feedback from that. And that was a new add going through, as well as some of our technology training. And then balancing that need for professional development activities and opportunities and individual choice. There are times that people need to attend specific required training. And then how do we balance that with choice and a number of sessions that run up against each other? So things that we continue to take a look at. I'm very happy that we continue to engage our staff via surveys, through QIC process, principals, conversations at building levels, things like that, to really do what I would consider a very comprehensive process in identifying our professional development needs. The attachment that was included provides a nice summary of our professional development opportunities that we've had over the year. You know, we bring all of our new staff in to start the school year ahead of our returning staff. And then we have a series of professional development days throughout the year as well. So I think it's a nice balance of trying to provide some just-in-time opportunities. And then one of the areas that, and I'll kind of end on this, one of the areas that I think we've done a really nice job in growing our professional development is through our Arts Integration Menominee Partnership, the AIM program. We do a fair amount of in-school day coaching with that. It's a nice complement to our academic and behavioral coach as well. And then we provide a series of after-hours, I'll call them after-hours, professional development opportunities through Arts Integration Menominee as well, through labs where staff can get exposure to different ways to integrate or access their content in and through the arts. So that's probably been one of the areas that's grown quite a bit over the last few years as well. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that people have related to the board.
Thanks, Brian. I have one. And you read my mind. I wrote five AIMS. I noticed AIM on that list five times. What a great resource. Can you remind us, that's grant-funded AIM, and it must have a lifespan? And what is that lifespan? And has there been talk about what do we do when AIM is not there?
Sure, yep. So AIM, we are in, I believe, year eight of AIM, seven or eight, I'd have to go back and look at the first year. That process and that grant funding through the Cardillo Foundation continues through next school year. But we've already received an invitation to apply for an additional two years. That will be our last opportunity for participation with funding specifically from the Cardillo Foundation. We have been focusing the last year. And then the purpose of the additional two years of the upcoming school year is really to look at sustainability. And one of the things that we've really been focusing on is trying to move more of the opportunities into the PD day structure that we have. And we've learned a lot about not only how to use those resources, but how to build our own staff as mentors and coaches in that process. When it's all said and done, we've participated for about 10 years in this process. So a very sizable oriented investment, focused on staff professional development. But yeah, right now, we're putting more and more into our day and how it's fit within our coaching model. But what I've been really happy is this is the last year and a half for AIM activities. We really leverage our staff, who have learned from this experience, to be the mentors to our existing staff.
Any other questions for Brian?
One thing that occurred to me when you were talking about the kind of hourly, you know, opportunities for professional development. I think one thing that's come up throughout the fall and the winter was, you know, we have a turnover of parent educators in other kind of hourly positions. And I'm wondering how you can address, or we've tried to do to address kind of the onboarding and kind of cultural goal-setting that happens in the PD days if they maybe they miss winter because they join a week later or a month later.
So I'll go to a couple of things. And then Sam actually wants to jump in. She's worked very closely with this, as well as Tonya, when we take a look at our special education parent educators. So each of our PD days, one of the things that we take a look at is, you know, what are the opportunities for meeting with hourly staff? As I mentioned, Sam led a session in January that was focused primarily on not only hourly, but I would say targeted very specifically to newer hourly staff and taking a look at that. And then I know we've been, Sam and her assistant have been working at what that onboarding process looks like. And trying to, and we've been trying to delineate kind of what are those basic functions that a new employee in the district needs. And then, quite frankly, looking for opportunities for them to meet not only with parent educators or other hourly staff, not just parent educators, but hourly staff as well in their buildings, but on our PD days. Our clerical group, for example, always meets at that point in time as well.
And I would say with regard to onboarding, we've worked really hard to, like Brian said, kind of get the basics for them. So how do you clock in and out? How do you request time off? So that those pieces are taken care of before they get into the buildings. And then we try to pair them up with a mentor at the building, someone who they can go to if they have questions. Because you learn at one time, and then it's not applicable for a couple of months. And then you, you know, as far as, let's say, requesting time off. So we try to get a good foundation. One of the things I think that can be challenging with our paras specifically is the experts in our district are really our special ed teachers. And they also need some professional development. So if we're tapping the same people, like Amy Wamboldt, who's our behavior interventionist, to have her presenting all the time, then she's not getting her PD as well. So we try to balance that out a little bit. One of the things that Tonya might be able to comment on, and I'm sure you've heard of non-violent crisis intervention training. And that's offered fairly consistently. So like, Aven, you were talking about if you were hired a week after, for instance, there would be another opportunity within the year for our paras to receive that non-violent crisis intervention training, which really works at de-escalating situations, tips and kind of techniques for working with students who might kind of escalate. And so I think those are good opportunities for our paras as well. And then they do jump into some of the sessions that are, you know, targeted at curriculum pieces. Because they need to know that stuff too. So I feel like we do a pretty good job, but we're always looking for other opportunities for them to further their professional development.
If I could just add a couple more comments. I'm really glad you mentioned the mentors in the building. And Aive to the cultural piece and other board members. Our building principals, and I see our principals out there, they really take initiative too with our new paras and our new teachers, all of our new employees at their building level. Because even though a lot of the initial training might come up here when they first are hired, it's really at that building level where the rubber hits the road. But I'm very, very proud of the commitment that our district makes to professional development. I think the board needs to be recognized for that. You know, our teachers, for instance, they're at 191-day contract. 175 of those 191 days are student instruction. There are 10 days designated for professional development. There are not many districts anymore that are affording 10 days of professional development. And I think we do a really good mix of, you know, the required professional development in terms of district-wide or at the building level. But we also have self-directed professional development. So we put time aside where people can pick and choose. And it doesn't even have to be at a certain time. It's kind of at their own on-demand type of deal. And then that also provides flexibility because we know that, you know, even though, you know, a teacher may be a teacher in terms of contract, we know that teachers have a wide variety of responsibilities and wide variety of content expertise. So I think our model does a good job balancing all those things and promoting continued growth with our staff.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just wanted to say thanks to Brian because I really liked your PowerPoint. You always do nice top shows. I'm guessing that Carl will probably help too.
You know, it's a collaborative effort.
To let her know thanks to do that.
In regards to the super-standardized stuff that applies to, say, every para, do we have any recorded on-demand content? Like a five-minute video on clocking in and out? And I only bring that up, I do some of that in my work. It makes my work more efficient because I used to do it live, right? 10 times a week. And now I took some time to record it. And now a client can watch it at their leisure. And I'm not doing it 10 times a week. So your experts you talked about, could they do a short video on-demand for the new layers?
We have done, excuse me, we've done some slides, some kind of PowerPoints or slides, presentations that we use when Crystal, my assistant, and I go out. And those, that can be shared with anyone. And so we will do that. Part of the onboarding process is she creates a folder for each of our new staff members. So it might be a teacher, it might be a para. And within that folder, she has pictures of the people that they might encounter most. So your principals, your secretaries, custodians. And then has all of that information in a paper format. So it takes, it walks you through step-by-step how to clock in, how to request time off. So it's kind of in both. It just depends on how they request that. And then our payroll specialist, Julie Harmer, also has some videos that she shares. She kind of lets them get their feet under them a little bit and then sends out some more information, like how do I check my payroll stub? So there's, we try to layer that in with both some paper copies as well as some online or on-demand training opportunities as well.
And the technology department has some of that. But I think everyone wishes some of those things would be five minutes. But we, let's start looking at bloodwork pathogens and, you know, recognizing abuse and things like that. Some of those tools have come from the Department of Public Instruction. And we were able to utilize those as well.
Sorry. Again, I want to echo this as a great report. I was happy to hear you mention, Brian, the efforts to accommodate staff who want to look at our district professional development. A number of us had the opportunity last week to be at the state school board convention. And so it's top of mind for me how valuable that type of opportunity is. I know also how challenging it can be to make it work.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And now on to the summer school discussion.
So the summer school discussion and presentation was made by John Sam. As you know, he's our Director of Academic Services, also sits at principal at Monomie High School. And as part of his duties with academic services, he's also coordinating summer school. So quite, quite a position. John, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. And a little PowerPoint for you that just kind of starts to cover the dates that we have and that is one of our big changes for this year. For session two, we're actually going to mirror session one and offer three weeks. That used to be a two-week program. We did see a decline in some of our camps and families start to go on vacations. We just see less and less. So this offers us an opportunity to get up to more families and provide more services for our students. We will, speaking of AIM, we brought that up a lot, we're still keeping our AIM camp. That's one of our big attenders, so we're, that's still going to be happening there. Right now, course updates, we're trying again to run fishing for two sessions. This is one of our biggest fan favorites at the school. We always hear that the fish are biting on the session and we don't offer it. So we're going to try to hit the full sessions this time, make sure everybody has an opportunity to catch some fish. At the high school, we're also going to be offering, this is new and kind of a build in progress as we're doing it, but it's going to be a summer Algebra I offering. It's an in-person session, going to be about seven weeks of in-person class, designed for students planning to pursue advanced courses in in-stempered fields. So as they enter the high school, they get that Algebra I and jump off to the geometry area. Our field trips are going to be back again and no surprise, fishing is one of our, our biggest ones and going to the farm. So those are going to reappear for our students. We're going to try a new one again this year called Bikes and Hikes where we have an avid biker for a teacher at the high school who's going to take kids on the bike trail with them. For those who don't know how to ride bike or are safe, feeling safe on that, we're going to offer hiking too on the trails and just kind of get kids out and moving for that day. They'll have a picnic lunch and meet up with everybody. Then we're just going to keep our collaborations as we have been going with the Boys and Girls Club for full and half days throughout the whole summer. UW-Sell is again offering our STEAM camps for ninth and 10th graders, or ninth through 12th graders, excuse me, and junior STEAM for our younger middle school students. Still working with CVTC on credit attainment courses. A lot of those come from our students that are taking academies that need to do some summer classes. Again, we thank Monomie Transportation, continue to work with us. We offer transportation for all of our programming in the summer. It is a little bit of a condensed route that they run, but that's there for all of our field trips and everything that we offer. And again, free breakfast and lunch for all students during the summer time. So that's another great offering.
So John, could you just clarify how the schedule is different in terms of the camps?
Yeah, absolutely. So session, like I said, session two used to wrap up after two weeks of programming and then we would jump into our three weeks, week-long camps. We were seeing a decline in two of those weeks, our STEAM camp and our TEAM camp. So we added a week to our session two. So now we mirror session one, so we have two, three week sessions. So the month of June will be session one, the month of July will be session two, and then we'll get into August and start that, our camp.
So that is a pretty significant change that we're not going to have three different camps, but I think, you know, I'm talking with the teachers, the principals, John, I think it makes sense. I think it's a good, a good change.
As a parent, I can say that makes a lot of sense to me. And I also just want to say I am continuously amazed at the quality of the summer program we have here at Monomie. We're so lucky, so thank you.
I just think the Algebra I is brilliant as well. My freshman unfortunately is one year too late. She already took her Algebra, but that would have been perfect for her if she was coming because she wants to take that extra math. So that's a great way to, to let those kids get that extra math in.
One remark, I saw the bikes and hikes. So one of my other hats I wear around here is I am on the board of the Fred and Drenser Trail. So if you need help with trail passes, with access, with access to the DNR or whatever, I can help you out.
You'll be here for me.
Any other questions, comments about summer school? Thank you.
So it was good from summer till winter.
Yeah. And it's been a winter, no doubt about it. Board members, as you see in your packets, we've now had five snow days and one two-hour delay. That's not nearly as, as bad as the year we had 11 snow days, but they're starting to add up a little bit. I appreciate the work that Brian did along with the building principals in terms of calculating how many hours of instruction are required. And we knew going in that we had plenty of hours of instruction. But as you can see, we're starting to approach, you know, with just a couple more snow days, we could be in a situation where we would have to bring kids back in June or extend our days. So one thing is concern with the requirements, the other concern is just the missed instruction. So we're not asking for any kind of approval tonight, but what we're recommending is, we're recommending that on Monday, April 10th, that day was going to be a professional development day. We're recommending that we go ahead and change it to a student instructional day. We just think that, you know, there's a pretty decent possibility, we're only at the end of January, that we could have another day or two of inclement weather. The other piece is the missed instruction. So at the next board meeting, we'll be asking the board to approve that recommendation so that families can plan. It's important that families get notice of this, you know, as, as early as possible. The other piece to this has to do with our contracts that we have for our teachers and then also the hourly assignments that we have for our hourly staff. And having gone through this not that long ago, I think it was two years before COVID, so 2018, isn't that something how everything gets related to?
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway. I think this worked out pretty well and we had done a lot of collaboration with the staff at that time. And, you know, when it was all said and done, we felt like it was a pretty equitable way to work through not only the policies of the employee handbook, but also trying to be flexible and provide people with options in terms of their, their work options. So board members, you'll have a chance to think about this for the next couple of weeks. We do plan to talk QIC groups. And while we have our QIC, QIC meetings, the first week of February, the slide communication will have taken place. And if there's any major changes, we'll certainly point those out before we ask for your approval at the next board meeting, but we want to get this in front of you as soon as possible. Any questions or suggestions at this point?
So I have a question. This takes us through the five days we've already had. Should we, should we need more? Like the, seems like the boys' basketball tournament, for instance, is always a snow day. Should we need more? You're going to revisit this plan at that point?
Yeah, should we need more, I think we'd probably be looking at that, that first week of June. You know, the way the calendar turned out, we were really trying to push to get done on June 2nd and not bring students back on Monday, June 5th. And because we have the extra days built into the schedule, I think, you know, we're in a good position for that. But in the event that we have a number of, of days more, you know, if it's just one, I think the high school is the only area where we'd be going over. We could talk to Mr. Drake and look at some of the late start Wednesdays or there's other creative options that we could come up with. So we're still, our intent is still to try to avoid bringing students back on June 5th. But if we were to miss, for instance, a whole week in February or something like that, you know, we'd get a real polar vortex or like that happen that year. You know, then I think we'd probably have to look at bringing students back in June.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Okay.
The self-directed professional development, do our staff have access to like online at your convenience or at your request virtual platforms where they can just, you know, I have two hours tonight, so I can go on and do this session or that sort of thing?
So the, the short answer is there are a variety of different options that, that staff currently have access to and that they use for the existing seven and a half hours. Many of our staff do put in more than seven and a half hours of self-directed PD. What we did, the last time we had to do this, is we did put together some of those things that our staff do have access to. For example, at the elementary level, our elementary language arts resource has a series of professional development videos that go along with that, that staff can access, you know, as part of their preparation. Many of them already do that, but there are some opportunities there. Our math resources have those. But what, what we could do if we need to, is go through and help staff to identify more if they run into those challenges. The self-directed PD is something that they coordinate with their building level principal. So periodically we will have some, some questions as to whether some additional resources. But what I'll say is I feel very comfortable right now with the amount of time right now by that staff do have access to enough content for them.
And then the, the last kind of question that I had maybe is more for you. Like getting teachers out and getting them like when we have the play or different things come out, like to try to get people, more people out to support and see what is going on. I mean, could that count toward something for some of these teachers? Because I often hear that teachers are putting in a lot of their own time at night grading papers and doing different things already anyway, and now we're adding more on top of that. It's just, I know this snow day didn't work out great for everyone and it's unfortunate, but I just don't want to make sure we're not pushing too much on our teachers. And I would rather see by way of them trying something new or seeing something different that maybe, you know, like the teachers in Nap might not always get to the high school to see a play or something. So something like that where it's more inclusive of bringing everyone together in the district?
Yeah, the nice thing about self-directed is that, you know, there's really nothing that's required. And, you know, if there is that situation where a teacher has an idea that they think would make them a better teacher, they can bring it to their principal and the principal can determine whether or not it would fit in with the self-directed professional development. Like Brian said, I, I don't think any of our teachers will be having a difficult time, you know, finding stuff to do. And an option is always to come back in June and some teachers will, that they'll want more time to review their resources in the classroom, you know, things like that. It just, it really comes down to the individual teacher and what their desires are.
Any other questions, comments?
Charlie, I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but I just want to point out in talking about this, our district has not moved towards remote learning days and we do not plan to do that this school year. But I think this is a good example, especially next year when we're going to have three less student days in the calendar. I think having an option for remote learning is going to be important. So again, we're not looking to do that for this school year, but you know, when you look at that breakdown, it says that we have six extra days at the high school and next year is going to be three. So most of the districts around us are doing some sort of remote learning. It's more asynchronous, a lot of it, especially for younger kids, is more based on packets and things like that. We know that there are technology issues that would not allow us to, you know, run asynchronous learning for all of our students. Not all of our students have those tools at home, but there are, districts are finding ways to make that work and that's something we plan to bring forward for next year.
So that discussion would happen when, when we address the employee handbook next year or what's the right phase for it to happen?
I, I don't think it'll be in the employee handbook necessarily. Well, maybe partial, part of it because there will have to be expectations. There'll be multiple pieces to it, Abe. I guess I don't have the answer to that right now.
I'd like to simply, I hear you say that Joe, because I had a constituent approach me and said, why are you not doing like some of the other districts in our area? I haven't heard any districts that do it, but this person has evidently. But wanting to know about why we weren't doing the learning. And I have mixed feelings on that because sometimes a snow day is a good mental health day for some because, you know, especially in the winter, it's crazy and busy and everything. I'm not saying, you know, that, that we shouldn't make it up that way, but if you're going to have that many days, maybe there should be an option somewhere in there.
Yeah, and the calendar that the board approved for next year does forgive the first two snow days. So even if we come up with a remote learning plan, I would not anticipate implementing it during the first two. But I think, you know, next year, you know, we always have this, you know, spring PD day and we've done this before that we've utilized, but I think after we have a couple of days, we're going to have to look at that seriously. Oh, and to the reason why other districts are doing that, not many districts have the time built in like we do. We have a lot of extra hours of instruction in Monomie.
One of the complaints that I've heard from districts that are doing the learning days at home, the remote days, if you will, is a lot of times the kids don't bring their computer home the night before. So it's, it, it doesn't work as, as well as it maybe could or should.
Plus, yeah, and plus like Joe said, you know, who has all the technology that lives out in the country, you know, and has the, the access and, you know, computer equity issue for sure.
We certainly have access issues in the area, that's for sure. Any other discussion on that? All right. Moving on to reviewing the strategic, excuse me, planning goals and major activities for 2023-24.
So this report is really just a checkpoint of the district work plan that the board approved last summer. It was brought back to the board this fall and this is just another checkpoint here. We'll be bringing it back in the spring as well. I know board members, you haven't had a lot of time to look at this because it was been, it was just recently updated. But the, the items that have been added to it since the fall update are italicized and I'm very happy to see that, you know, pretty much in every single pillar, there's been continued progress. You know, some items are more second semester items, which the second semester at the high school starts tomorrow. You know, so some of these items will be initiated, you know, really even within this week. But we continue to make really good progress. And meeting with the staff last Monday, we had a professional development day. I'm just so, so pleased that our teachers and our staff members have really taken off with that overall overarching goal of trying to ensure that every single student in our district has an adult in the district that they feel they can trust. And at the beginning of professional development day in August, we had kind of laid out a timeline, you know, try to hit this target by first quarter, this target by second quarter, third quarter, et cetera. Well, they've blown past that timeline so quickly that essentially we've turned it over, you know, it's no longer, you know, a district timeline. It's really an individual building, in some cases, an individual grade level or classroom timeline because it's, it's been met so well. In fact, I know at the middle school, they've already gone through the whole timeline once and, and my understanding is they're actually going to re-implement some of the inventory work and checking back in and seeing the growth from, you know, last quarter to the next quarter. So I, I think our, our staff is doing a great job on that and it's something we can be very proud of. But there's a lot of heavy lifting that's coming up. Certainly our staffing plan, that's a big lift. The budget work and the compensation work that's going to be done over the next few months. So it's, it's been really enjoyable the last few months, but I think we're going to have some very difficult items coming towards us in the next phase of this work plan. Any questions or comments?
I was curious about the initiative to, you know, see every student have a trusted staff member in school. I'm wondering if the board will have an opportunity to hear from building staff about kind of lessons learned or reflections on that? I'm glad to hear it's going so well and I'm just maybe kind of personally like very curious to hear what they're finding or how they're experiencing that.
Yeah, we are planning on having a presentation at the end of the year. I'm not going to say that we're going to have, you know, 20 teachers in here or something, but certainly we will have a presentation that reflects the work that's been done.
Thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts, questions?
I guess then on the second part of what you said, you know, with the heavy lift coming in from second semester, do you feel still comfortable with, knowing it'll be a lot of work, but comfortable with the timeline and the sort of deadlines here?
At this point, I think so, Rachel. And I think the board has been flexible as needed. You know, I know there's a couple items on there that, you know, we're kind of shooting for January 1, but with the snow days and such, you know, there are some things that, you know, for instance, came forward tonight. So I'm not overly concerned with that as long as that flexibility continues. And I also feel comfortable that if we get to a point where, you know, the capacity just isn't there, I feel comfortable bringing that to the board and, and share that and then we can decide from there what our next steps might be.
Okay. And I guess I'd like to personally thank the principals and the staff on connecting with the kids. I think that is so important for the, for school safety as well as the mental health of, of the students. I think that's, that's a great, great thing to be done and moving so quickly. It's very important. Thank you all for that. All right. Moving on to the preliminary staffing and course offering timeline for 2024.
Well, that was a pretty good unplanned segue, I believe. And this is one of the heavy lifts that is coming and it is every year when we look at our staffing plan. I would say it's maybe a little heavier this year just for the, the fact that we're still coming off a pandemic. coming off a pandemic and staffing levels are still settling a little bit. But also the needs of our students and the needs of the district are still settling. We're certainly in a different spot. We were pre-pandemic. This timeline was shared with the board back in October, and that's really the beginning of the timeline that you can see. But now that we're getting to the point where more of these items are going to be coming before the board, Brian, the directors, and I thought it was important to bring this back to you, just to refresh your memory and just kind of lay out for you what you can expect over the next several meetings. I do want to point out also that there's been a couple additions to this. And I may need Brian's help just to make sure. But I, I know that in February, when we do the review of high school sessions, we wanted to make sure on February 14th that the board understood, you don't have to be ready for that review as a board, that that's our administrative review. And that was in detail. It just so happened that February 14th also was right there at that board meeting date right before then. So we wanted to point that out. And then Brian, the other piece had to do with intervention, I believe.
That's correct. One of the things, one of the things that we'll be doing as part of that staffing plan review is conducting a review of our current intervention staffing that we have K-12 and having some discussion along that way of how we look at continuing to meet those needs.
So that's the fifth bullet down in the month of February. And the reason why we wanted to point that out is the fact that, you know, intervention was expanded greatly with the pandemic and then, you know, initially following the pandemic. And it's been a huge investment that the school district made. I still believe there's going to be justification for intervention services, but I think that's something that the board is going to want to review, you know, which is a little bit abnormal compared to the normal review process. So we did want to point that out. Otherwise, it's very similar to what you saw in October. And I guess just open up for any questions or comments. Otherwise, it's just an informational item.
So as we get to these points, you know, looking at reviewing the intervention programming, the course recommendations, I guess part of this is a question about process, like will we look at this sort of in conjunction with budget projections? Or are we sort of analyzing this as it's on its own?
You know, Leah has shared the budget timeline. The challenge, Rachel, is that it's really going to be uncertain with the state biennial budget, what our budget projection is going to be. So it's kind of a cart before the horse or chicken and egg type of deal. You know, we'll try to give you an idea of where we think the budget is heading. I mean, Leah is continuing to, you know, get projections, you know, down in Milwaukee. There were some suggestions about how budgets could be projected going into this biennial. But it really is going to be a challenge. I guess that's all I can share on that right now.
Maybe just to state the obvious, and there are three main constraints we have to balance, right? One is the needs of our students, obviously. And that's, I think, primarily sort of what this timeline is about, is figuring out what those needs are and what it would take to meet them. The second is the workforce environment, what, how hard it is to hire people on a permanent basis and on a permanent basis. And the third, of course, is the budget, right? And so if we fully intertwine all three of those, it's almost an impossible problem. If we focus on student needs first, you know, as our goal, and then figure out how to work with the HR hiring process and, and as a board, really think carefully about the budget, but, you know, put our first emphasis on that first constraint, the student needs, I think it'll be an okay situation in the decisions.
Dale?
Can you tell me a little bit about intervention programming?
Yeah, you know, it's not really on the agenda for tonight, so I don't want to go into too much detail. But, you know, students who are not performing at grade level, for instance, it's additional support. You know, Title I programming in the past may have, you know, be an example of kind of what intervention programming is now. It's not exactly apples to apples, but that'd be a good example. Our district really expanded math intervention programming after the pandemic based on our student achievement scores and what we were seeing with student performance.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Okay, let's move on to the staff compensation survey.
So speaking of another challenge coming, the consumer price index that was certified by the WDRC for next year is going to be about 8%, which is crazy high compared to anything I've seen. So we know we have some challenges coming down that way. And part of our work plan was to continue to collaborate with our staff, as we have in the past, to discuss compensation and to identify ways that we can do a good job with compensation here in Menominee. And part of that was, we reached out to the staff with a supplemental survey done by School Perceptions to get staff perceptions in terms of compensation in our district. So Sam, if you could please run through the results of that survey.
Sure. So we had 311 total respondents, which is a pretty good number, about 68% participation rate. So we feel pretty good about, about those that took the survey and then the results that we received. You can see that about 50% of those that responded are teachers, and then the other, about 50% is made up with the other, other groups within the district. You'll also notice that about, let me say about 67% of our staff that responded to our survey have 10 years or less with the SDMA. So we heard quite a bit from our, our teachers and staff members that have been with us for under 10 years about what it is that they want to have us prioritized. So moving into the, the compensation results, this is out of a, on a scale of one to five, and so five kind of being the, what they strongly agree with. And one of the things that, that we like to see is that, that our staff does seem to understand our paid wage salary schedule. They also understand the benefits that are available to them. So that's, that's encouraging, but, you know, we've communicated that and that they understand and hopefully feel like they can ask questions if they do have questions. But moving more toward the bottom of those results, you'll notice that on a scale of five, we have the 2.06 where they are reporting that they don't feel that their pay is fair in relation to their job responsibilities. I shouldn't say that they don't, it's just that's one of the lower results that we received. And then also that they are satisfied with their pay. Those were the two kind of lowest results that we had with that question. So in looking at, yes, sorry, go ahead.
Just so that we follow up in the key, in the key, strongly agrees five, agrees four, disagree is two, strongly disagree, what is three?
Three is neutral.
Neutral.
Yep.
I made the assumption that it wasn't.
No, that's a good, that's a good catch.
Either agree or disagree.
Correct, yep. Yep, three is neutral. So we asked the question about what parts of the current compensation plan would they like to see improved? And the one that came out with 57% of the respondents was additional compensation offered for longevity. So at identified time increments that they would receive longevity, maybe a longevity bump or kind of bands within those time periods. And we do offer longevity at, within the district. And I believe you have to be with the district for 20 years before you realize that, that compensation. And so whether or not people understand that that's something that we offer, maybe they, if you look at the, the group that mostly responded, they're 10 years in the last, 10 years or less with our district. So they may not realize that we do offer longevity. But that is one of the things that we, that we want to take a look at.
And Sam, if I could just jump in, much of our pay scale is based on longevity, if you really look at it. What Sam's referring to is an additional longevity incentive that our district began about five years ago or so. But if you look at the teacher scale and you look at the hourly scale, really longevity is probably the number one factor in terms of, of moving on the scale. So it is recognized, but I think, you know, people like to see it recognized more.
The second, second highest response that we received was additional compensation offered for extra duties outside of the school day. And we do have some of that, you know, if they're doing curriculum work outside of the school day, that is something that they are compensated for. But we are, we're looking more at, I think, school, after-school meetings and those pieces that we ask for people to be part of our, part of our committees. And so that's, that's something that came through as, as one of the more popular items for what they would like to see improved. And then offering the recalibration salary wage schedule placement for existing staff members as an option. And I think that that kind of goes along with looking at maybe those that are in the middle of the pay scale and recognizing maybe years of experience outside of the district. There's a number of different ways that we could look at recalibrating, but that does take quite a bit of, of work and, I guess, kind of reconfiguring our current wage scale.
Does anybody have any questions about that part? Okay, go ahead, Sam.
Okay, thank you. So parts of the current compensation plan, again, the other, that was the, the next page, and, and just kind of going through all the way down to the last respondents there. Moving on to the priorities, that's the purple. And the, the way, the scale changes a little bit. So it goes from a five-point scale down to a three-point scale. So one being not important, two being somewhat important, and then three being very important as priorities within the district. So the cost of living adjustment for all employees, which would be the same percentage increase for all employees, which is, is essentially what we have done over, over the years with our, our current compensation model, was, was placed at a 2.74%. So that seemed to, that's the most popular response there. And then steps earned on the pay scale for years of service, again, and that is part of our current compensation model. And so we realize that that is something that staff prioritize at this point. And then moving on to some ways that the district could recognize exceptional efforts for performance. And the, the top response with this was an extra personal day. So what we are seeing, I think, is a trend that people are valuing their, their personal time and recognizing that not all events fall into like the summer and on the weekends. And so we do have people that ask for additional time off during the year. And so this is, I think, kind of echoing that that's something that is important to our staff, is having more personal time. And then compensation tied to performance measures was the next highest response, which I thought was kind of interesting, because when, if you go back to the priorities on page 202, new incentive based on performance measures was the lowest. And so there's a little bit of, I guess in my mind, just a little bit of kind of figuring out what, what does that mean? If it's kind of rated as way to, to recognize exceptional performance, but then it also didn't seem to be a high priority within, within that set, so.
Yeah, I was looking at that too. And I think perhaps the first one, people may have been thinking more about, you know, just, you know, kind of their overall contract, their base pay essentially. Whereas this one, they may have been thinking more in the lens of bonus structure.
So that's, that was, that's the end of the, the survey. Any questions, comments?
Do we have any compensation tied to merit or any sort of performance?
Not, not very much. What I would say, Angie, is that if we have an employee, a teacher, an hourly employee who is not meeting expectations and they're on a plan of improvement, then they do not qualify for any kind of increase the following year. Other than that, there's not a, a bonus structure.
I was thinking about the, actually, I'm sorry, I think someone did a comment before.
I'm trying to find that slide.
Okay, hold on a minute. So the comment about, you know, about increases for longevity, you know, so the 20-year time, I, I certainly appreciate that it's kind of built into the structure with, you know, degree incentives and so on. But with a 20-year incentive, someone, you know, I think we see a large attrition of teachers around that four, five, six-year mark. And so if someone's saying, should I stay for four years or for five? Should I get out now and aspire for six? 20 seems a lifetime away. And so I wonder if maybe it's worth looking at breaking that sort of incentive up to shorter increments so that there's something to look forward to. Like, yeah, maybe I should save my fifth year and see if, you know, see if I can do a handle of things.
Abe, were you talking about the teacher scale when you talk about this?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's a good point. One thing to consider though is that, you know, there, there were years where we tried to condense it a bit, but to do that, especially when the CPI was so low, that really would have left a big portion of our staff, the most experienced members of our staff, with no increase. So, you know, what we've done for the last several years is that we've added steps. But by doing that, it creates a longer scale. But if you look at the scale and study it, the large, the larger increases, they're actually triple the size, are in the beginning there. So I, I do think there's disproportionality, and perhaps it's something we want to see more disproportionality. Now, last year, the board went on more of a percentage basis on the cells, which that messed that up a little bit, because, you know, 3% on 70,000 is a lot different than 3% on 40,000. So the cells towards the end got a bigger portion of that. So that kind of messed things up last year. But I, I think there is some of that to build, that's already built in, maybe something we can do more of.
And, you know, I think these numbers are, I think we want to make them higher, right? One thing that you probably don't have the answer to this, but I think if there's any way we can figure out some, some sort of comparables from other districts, it'd be very interesting. So we know what this pay scales are, right? We can compare to other districts. You can look up in public records what people are being paid. I'm sure we've done this extensively every week, right? But are they satisfied at different pay grades at different districts? You know, it might be a lot more about the pay structure or the incentive packages or these things like release time that might actually lead more to, to, let's say, you know, job satisfaction than just straight up salary. And one last, and then I'll be quiet, but nothing to speak. The comment about, about like a day off, an extra personal day, that really struck home to me, because, you know, working at the university, one of the things that really, I found really difficult was that during the semester, there's never a day off, right? If school's on, you are there every single day, because simply the, the overhead of getting someone to cover your class, getting the materials ready for them, that's as much as doubling your amount of work anyway. So it's like, well, I mentioned, show up even if I'm sick or whatever, right? Which is not a great thing to do, but it's, it's what people do. And so the idea that, that it'd be some way to say, actually, it's okay to take a breather for a day, right? It's okay to like take this, this Friday or this Tuesday off because you need it. We found a way to accommodate that. So often, it's the friction of those benefits, more so than the benefit itself.
Abe, a couple of things I'd like to point out, and I think those are really good thoughts. First of all, I'll start with the second piece, the, the personal day. I think it's important to know that our teachers, and I'm just talking about teachers now, our teachers get three personal days per school year. And with only 175 student days, and then in this case, we have five snow days, 170 student days, and now we've pulled a classroom teacher out for three already, we're down to 167 student days with that teacher. And that's assuming that the teacher doesn't get sick. And what we've really seen, especially since COVID, but even pre-COVID, a lot of our teachers are parents. So, you know, COVID was terrible when the, when the kids have got quarantined and stuff. The amount of time that our teachers were away from their kids, I mean, you can't replicate it. So as much as I like the idea of providing more flexibility, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at that some more, it, it's, it comes at a pretty high cost to our student achievement and what we're trying to do with the mission of our school district. But I do think personal days could come into play here.
Just a really quick, yeah, so I think maybe the meta, the, the higher point in what I was kind of expressing was that often the benefit itself may exist, but it's the friction of applying it, which can make it seem like it's inaccessible. So even the, I mean, certainly COVID's a whole other situation, right? But often there's an incentive, which is often, you know, involving time off, where it's just hard to do. So finding ways of making it a little bit easier to use that and take advantage of it, not feel like it's a dangling bribe, which has never actually been.
Sure. And another big, nice thing we have going for us And another big, nice thing we have going for us in the SDMA is that we do have a spring break. And I know that that's something that, that we will never, ever go down that road again unless the board wants to do it on their own. But I, I'm being facetious, but there's, there's a reason why there was such drastic, you know, feedback when we talked about getting rid of the spring break, because I think for a lot of teachers, you know, that, that is their break, and, you know, we have a pretty long Christmas break as well, not as long as some school districts, or winter break, I should say. But I also think what we've done with the calendar around the Thanksgiving time for next year will be helpful. So I, I do think there are some, some nice things built in, but it's not this PTO bank that some people would love. To your other question about comparables, and this is, this is something that I think we're going to need some feedback on. You can go on the state website and, and get comparables. It is, and I did it myself about seven years ago, and Sam's made it better a couple times since then. It's really tricky because you can't just take a, a scale and compare it to another scale. What you need to do is you need to go and say, okay, so what, what would a beginning teacher be making in, you know, these seven school districts? What would a teacher with 10 years of experience? What about a teacher with 10 years of experience and a master's degree? You know, and you gotta run a bunch of different scenarios. And then we kind of color-code the spreadsheet, and it kind of gives us an idea of, you know, where we may be higher, where we may be lower. And certainly there are areas where we are higher and lower, kind of depending on, on what our district has prioritized through our, our pay policy. But, you know, that's something, you know, Sam and I were looking at that, and Sam did all the legwork. If we wanted to hire someone to do comparables, you know, is that something that could be better, give the board more information? I will say, you know, the proposals we receive back, you know, probably between $15,000 and $25,000, you know, to get information that I don't know is better than what Sam and I can do. The challenge is, is that, you know, capacity-wise, you know, I, I think we do a good job, but we can't recreate it every year. I mean, we, we do the best that we can. I think the QIC group has been fairly receptive. I, I think there's been trust in, in the past when we've talked about comparables. But if that is something the board would want us to do, to hire someone to come in and do comparables, we would need to get on that real soon.
I was also thinking about the term longevity, but I was looking more at the additional compensation offered longevity.
The bonus, Dominique?
Yes.
Yeah.
So even like when I was a teacher, I knew what that was, but in my mind, like, I was never going to do 20 years. Like, that was crazy. Like, I thought it would be amazing if I did 10, and then I did five, and was like, and then dipped. So like, in my mind, looking at this, I think, and especially as our workforce is changing, I don't know that 20 years is what people think about for longevity. So that might be something to consider, is, is there something for every five-year marker or at least 10 or something, especially for these younger, or employees that have been with us for a short amount of time, some of which I'm assuming are younger, that it might not be that they don't understand what that is, but that 20 years is an unthinkable amount of time away.
I, I think that's a really good point, and, and just to give a little history, and I didn't mean to cut you off, were you done? Okay. The longevity bonus that we have, I agree, it's, it's not very effective. But I think we also have to understand at the time it was put in, the new money, the CPI was so small that we were trying to find ways to, to put some additional dollars in towards that group of employees. So, and that's also one of the reasons why it kind of corresponded really with a step at a time. But I, I do agree with you, I think if we're going to make a true longevity program, it needs to be more than, you know, this small longevity bonus that's way out in the future. There's opportunity there.
I had a follow-up question on the personal day. Do you have an idea of the company or how do most teachers use those three personal days?
Yes, they do. And it's, they're given two and then they can earn a bonus.
Okay.
But yes, they, they do. And one thing that I will say is that we really do work with, with people individually on their circumstances. So, you know, if they need to use personal, we have a limit on the number of days that, within the district, that number of, I guess, people that can be out using personal days. And so there are some really popular days, the Friday before spring break, the Monday after spring break. And so we do work with people and, and really try to allow those, those days so that people can utilize those days when they, when they need to.
Can you remind me, sorry? Oh, if people don't use them, can they make them so that if they are sick two years, you know, two years later, that they have these built up?
Right. So the personal days come from their paid leave bank, and that's, that's just a, a bank of hours, and two of those days can be used as personal days. And if they don't use both of them, that paid leave time just rolls over into the next year. And so it's, it will be there. They don't, the, the personal day itself doesn't roll, so they can't then, the next year, accumulate three or, three or four days. But the time itself is there, so they can use it, you know, in, in the big years, and they can accrue that time.
How is the third day earned?
If they use two or less days of paid leave in the year before. So this year, if we have someone who doesn't, they only use, they use two or less paid leave days. So that includes sick time and emergency days. We don't include snow days with that. But if they use two or less days, then next year, they would be entitled to a third bonus personal day.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. No, that's, that's important, because I said three, but really, and it's not personal days, it's paid leave that can be used for personal reasons. And it's all in the employee handbook, but I, those are important distinctions, so thank you.
Sam, on the, the priorities one of two slide, the steps are, are not equal steps, correct? As you move through the steps, each increment is not equal, correct?
No, like the amount, you mean?
Correct.
Right. We had, prior to last year, we had a, like a, a pretty, I'd say, equal, but I mean, we had, the increments were, were defined, if that makes sense. So it was 500, 1,000, or 1,500 at each step. And then when everything changed last year with the percentage, that changed then the steps themselves and that. So it's no longer 500,000, 1,500.
So because the steps are not equal throughout the scale, doesn't that put the first question, the cost of living adjustment question, in conflict with the second question?
It might a little bit, but I, I also think the first question might be getting at the different employee classifications. And the district's history has been that the different employee, the, the different employee classifications have received the same percentage increase. That doesn't necessarily mean that each teacher received the same, but all the teachers received, you know, let's say, 4%, then all the clerical received 4%, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you for that clarification. And as far as the comps are concerned, from my point of view, your salary is only one piece of the, of your happiness at your job, if you will. The culture is another piece that you can't really pull out of. Even if you hired someone for $20,000, it would be difficult for them to pull out the, the whole culture and, and why am I happy at my job? Because of that, to me, and because you can get the salary pieces off the DPI website, it seems to me like, like doing a compensation, a comparison study of compensation doesn't make a lot of sense for the, for the cost. I don't see the value for the cost, I guess is what I'm saying.
I, I think what's important though is that we do enough of it where we know that we're not, you know, so far overpaying, which we know that, but we also are confident that we're not so far below market that people are leaning for, you know.
But what you've already done, you're confident in that, right?
Yes. Well, and there's, there's hints of that, right? So on the current comp practices, a three is don't agree, disagree, right in the middle. So anything less than a three is slanting a little bit towards disagreeing. And so the bottom three there, the one, the two, five, one, the compensation motivates me to remain in the district. So just a hair under neutral. So if some people lean a little negative that, yeah, it's, it's not maintaining me to the state here, something else is keeping me here, right? Because they're still here. So could be culture, could be they love, you know, the specific thing they're teaching. I'm satisfied if my pay drops a little bit more and then my pay is fair in relation to my job responsibilities. And honestly, the last one feels more like a referendum on the teaching and education profession right now. Honestly, like, it, it's not fair. You know, I, I wish we could pay our teachers more. And, and if you go to a clerk, you're not going to double your pay. And if you go to, right, it's like you're not going to double your pay.
I was struck by the same correspondence that you was pointing out, Carl. So if you look at the current compensation practices, one of two, and the next slide, two of two, so the last one is, on the first page, is my benefits are competitive with similar jobs and I find elsewhere, that's on three, dead on. Yeah, sure. Neither agree nor disagree, just kind of neutral, right? Whereas my pay is fair is only a two. And so people are saying, I agree this as, it is vaguely competitive and it's low everywhere, right? And that those two match, tell a pretty cohesive story there.
It really isn't much of a surprise, is it?
No.
I, I agree with Carl. One of the things that I'm, I'm interested in too is, I think that they're more concerned about the market in itself with all jobs, not just teaching jobs. When you go out there and you look at the private sector, they make a heck of a lot more money. And that's what we, at some teachers, like, they leave and go to the private sector because they are making more money. And so I think it's more about bringing up teaching to be more of a, I mean, it used to be a very glamorous job. Gosh, to be a teacher, that was the most exciting thing ever. You know, and, and I think it's, I think it's getting, and, and I think it's because there's such a gap between the private sector and teachers. And if you think about it, teachers teach everybody. I mean, future doctors, lawyers, millionaires, teachers are there with them. And so I think that's a, a big piece that needs to be looked at. And I don't know if we have the capacity or if we even have the power to change that, but that is something I think that the teachers with this, I think, have kind of considered that as well.
I'm going to go with Joe and Charlie were just saying that perhaps it's hard to capture the nuance in a comparable. I was curious if questions of comparable pay ever come up kind of casually in other interviews, like, you know, I'm leaving, you know, I would have stayed except for the body, you know?
Every once in a while. I, to be really honest, it's, it's mostly for personal reasons and, and proximity is really what we're hearing a lot now. There's just, there's more availability of positions, and so people have the opportunity to work closer to where they are. They might take a job with us for a, a couple of years, and for the first few years, they're willing to drive 45 minutes, but once something becomes available that's closer to home, that's where they're, they're looking. So I, I do hear it every once in a while, but it's not, I, I can't honestly think of anyone who has said, I'm leaving because the pay is, is just terrible. I would probably see that more with hourly than I would with, with our teachers.
And that's what I was just going to say, I think, especially with the unemployment rate the way it is and what, you know, what we've seen in the hourly market in town, I, I think you're starting to see more pressure on our hourly wages. I would say the other piece would be with our, our principals and directors. You know, there's, there's quite the competition out there, and I think, you know, that them in the hourly would be the ones where the, the pay is, is probably the most pressured.
Are there, there are no wage surveys, like, none of the national associations or no one in Wisconsin is conducting wage surveys for teaching institutions?
There, there's wage surveys, but like I was saying, Angie, every district has their own pay scale. So we get some generalized numbers very easily, because it's all reported to the state. But those generalized numbers, you, you really have to spend a lot of time trying to interpret to figure out, you know, what, what is it for each level of classification and what is it for different levels of experience? You know, a teacher with five years and a master's degree, you know, it's, it's very complicated very quickly.
Some of that is a common core in some of the private sector surveys. They, they have some really extensive, really well-done ones. They're super expensive, but, yeah.
And I did, I, this last week, I took some time to connect with some of those that do more of the private sector. And, and they have some transferable pieces for education, but it, it really is looking more at generalizations and then the 25th, 50th, and 75th percentile. And so if we're looking for something that's a little bit more vocal, that's where the legwork really comes in.
Well, I think you've given us good feedback. I think that's what Sam and I wanted to hear. And I encourage you to go back to the last meeting when Sam put together the timeline for working through this compensation issue. You know, I would make sure that, you know, you're familiar with that. But in terms of tonight, I think it was good to go through these results and your feedback related to compensation comparables was very helpful, so thank you.
I just have a quick comment. First of all, I, I appreciate the district, you know, they did the first school perceptions that you did, that we heard, you know, like, back in the fall. I think the teachers heard it in October and shortly after. And I really appreciate the fact that the district picked up on, that compensation was picked up there, that they weren't pleased with that, and that you followed up with another survey. And it sounds like, you know, you're willing to look at it and figure out a way that's fair and helps our teachers. And so I would like to just say I really appreciate that because I think a lot of districts have to do that, so thank you.
Thanks, Amy, that's much appreciated.
I have one more question. Under the current compensation practices, pay practices are administered consistently for all employees. It was close to neutral, but it's a little underneath neutral, and I'm wondering if you have an idea of what our employees, like, why some of our employees would feel that it's, that it's not consistent, like, what would cause them to lean that way?
I'll answer it, Sam, and I'm sure you have the same answer. That, Dominique, the market is so much different with all the people moving in and out and in the high-demand positions. We are bringing people in to different parts of the pay scale differently than it's ever been before. I think that's a big part of it. And then also going back to Act 10, I, I believe there's some, there, there's some teachers that equate our pay scale and they consider every step as a year, where that's not necessarily the case. So would you think they add to that?
No, I would agree. And then you have to remember too that this involves not only our teachers, but our hourly staff members. And so the way that their wage scale is set up, there might be the feeling that, you know, there's some inconsistency there as well. So I think it's, it's, if we tease that out a little bit more, we might see something, you know, pop up. But I agree with Joe, the way that we sometimes bring people in, especially for those high demand positions, it, it can be tough for somebody who's been at the district for a number of years. They may feel that they're not as, they're not compensated as well, if that makes sense.
And, and a more specific example, especially with, you know, Angie and Charlie stepped it off quick, we might as well go for another minute here. You know, if someone was hired maybe 12 years ago for an elementary position, there might have been 200 applicants, and we might have brought that person in before my time or whatever, but might have brought that person in, you know, right at the, the beginning salary, even if they might have had some experience in a propio school or something like that. Whereas nowadays, you know, if someone has experience, you know, really, they're, you know, demanding that experience and sometimes even more, especially in harder filled positions. So I can see where some people would think that that's not equitable. Does that make sense? Do you think there's any of that piece of the masters versus that certification or whatever, is that also leading in there a little bit maybe? You know, that's a good point. Some people actually receive pay increases for not even having their full masters during the collective bargaining days when there may have been additional lanes for, you know, six credits, 12 credits, whatever. And then, you know, when the employee handbook came in, it really was masters or not. That could be. In terms of this new one with National Board Certification, I don't know that that's necessarily a problem, but I suppose some people, some person could see that to be unfair.
Well, I think probably that, reference the, the circulatory regime of salary scales, most of these respondents were above peerless in 10 years, that's probably not even their worldview, so.
Yeah, but there's still, there's still a number of that.
There's still a few.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Seems like we covered that. Cover that, yep. All right, let's move on to the review of the annual board member attendance report.
And Charlie, this is just an informational item that the board asked me start tracking. So every year at this time, we put a report together and we'll put it out in the public side of board docs tomorrow, but it just shows the board attendance at the meetings.
Any questions or comments on that? All right, moving on to the Board Administration and State Education Convention reports.
So last week, I believe it was six members of the Board of Education and myself went down to Milwaukee. There is no snow in Milwaukee, not even snow banks. I was a little shocked by that. But it was really good. It was another great convention with not only keynote speakers at general sessions, but also breakout sessions. And, you know, with having so many board members there, it's impressive in terms of the number of sessions that were able to be attended. And there's a little summary session into the report. I don't know if each board member wants to maybe share a highlight or how you'd like to do it, but I don't think we need to try to go through the whole convention, but I'll just open it up.
I'll make a really short summary, if that's okay. The thing that struck me personally was that the topics listed in the workshops and the sessions were very relevant to all of us, which tells me that every district in the state is facing the same challenge as we are. It's like, oh, that's relevant to us, that's also relevant to us. These are all great sessions, I wish I could go to all of them. Big themes that really struck me were the number of districts trying to figure out the fiscal cliff and whether or if or how a referendum makes sense. And the answer is different in all different cases. And everyone trying to figure out, how do we, how do we get through the next couple of years of this financial transition? And how do we plan in the face of complete uncertainty about the budget? And that, to me, was one of the key themes throughout.
Any other thoughts, Amy?
I just want to tell a quick story. I think, Angie, you were there too. It was the speaker, the general session speaker on, the general session on Thursday, I think it was Thursday afternoon. The incoming Wasby president had a $100 bill, and she held it up in the air and she asked everybody if they want a $100 bill. Of course, everybody raised their hands and said, yeah, it's a $100 bill. So she, you know, went ahead and, you know, got it all, you know, wrinkled up and everything, and then she held it up. You still want this $100 bill? Yes, we still want this $100 bill. Then she put it on the ground, she stomped on it. She picked it up and said, you still want this $100 bill? And everybody said yes. And what she was analogizing on that was the fact that all of our kids are valuable, no matter what.
As, it was mentioned before, as a teacher, it is definitely challenging to go to conventions. And so it wasn't lost on me that now I had an opportunity to go somewhere to help me do this job better. And so I really appreciated that opportunity. I felt like I learned a lot and I also learned a lot about what I don't know and what I want to keep digging into. But it was a great reminder, like Abe said, everything was super relevant, but I think it's easy to get hyper-focused on one issue or one challenge. It was a good reminder of all the things that the school board is responsible for and involved in.
I'll also say, I thought that the schedule of workshops and the content of the conference was just fantastic. I learned a lot. I attended both the half-day workshop on school finance, school finance puzzle, and the workshop on deep dive into Wisconsin school finance. So I feel really a lot more prepared.
I feel you.
But I'll also say that in both of those workshops, the speakers commented on how, how many questions people had, how good the questions are, how acute, and how like, how people were coming in ready to talk about school finance. And these were guys who, as far as I could tell, had been presenting for quite a few years on the same topic. So I think to Abe's point, like, there's a lot of people who have, who are really tuned in to the state budget and what's going on. It's in fact on school finance and nervous about it, but also like, paying attention and ready to act.
I felt this, the conference was really well-done. I was very impressed. I learned a lot. I sat in as the delegate assembly this year. Every resolution passed except for one, which had to do with free lunch for everyone. And I think the reason that it didn't pass was the funding, because funding was such an overwhelming overarching issue of the conference this year. And you missed the last, very last session, but the governor was there and he did say in his speech that he was planning to add $2 billion to the education budget this year. So we'll see if it happens when it comes up. But it was, it was really well-done. I enjoyed all of them, getting to know my co-board members better. I think it'd be fun if next year all of us could go. It was really, really well-done. Thank you for hosting and taking us out to dinner. Thank you.
So I was there more for work than I was as a school board member, so I didn't get to attend a lot of the sessions. However, I did attend one that was in the evening, and that was from, for the Association of Equity and Funding. And that's a very interesting group and there's some interesting things that they have in the works in reference to the state budget and what they might do if the state budget does not come through, let's say. So that was an interesting conversation for quite some time. So it was, it was good. But like I said, I was there mostly for work, so I wasn't able to attend a lot of one. But it was a good conference. And you could see that it came back from last year. Last year wasn't as robust as this year and not yet to pre-COVID levels, but getting close.
And the last thing I would add, and I think this was the third year that I had to cancel school from my hotel room in Milwaukee. Getting that figured out. And I think one thing that you all kind of alluded to at some point was the value of the networking, being able to network with the different board members and different presenters and different superintendents. And, you know, to hear about a lot of the same challenges and different approaches people are taking. And I know I really enjoy that opportunity. And then just to, you know, feel to spend time and do that. I think it was very, very valuable.
All right, any other comments, questions on that? Let's move on to legislative advocacy.
So it just so happens that right after we talked about legislative advocacy, the Wisconsin School News, the publication put out by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, had really a whole publication about advocacy. So I did link that in for board members. And I know that there were also discussions about advocacy at the conference, the fiscal cliff, which has been mentioned a number of times to something that everyone's concerned with. But that information is there for board members. I don't know if anybody had anything else to share today.
Something I was wondering that, you know, there's a lot of opinions about advocacy at the conference, tying back to previous agenda items. And one thing that very consistently can be pulled across the board was the, you know, value of simply having ongoing communications with your legislators and other community leaders, government they might be. So I think you mentioned once, Joe, that there's, you know, there's kind of a CISA regional meeting. Is there, I'm curious if there's interest among the board about trying to do, you know, just like a networking breakfast or brunch or whatever people do, you know, to kind of have, just build a relationship, advocacy aside, just build relationships and make sure that we're kind of present in the lives of our representatives and so on.
I can tell you that over at CISA 10, we do a meeting once, at least once a year with the local representatives and we struggle often to get them there. It's a larger group, obviously, because it's 29 school districts, not one. But we struggle to get them there. And when they come, it's always great, good discussion. But it can be difficult to try to get everybody in the room at the same time, if you will. And they're there to listen to us and they do a good job of that. But they're also, you know, they have other constituents as well. So I know a lot of times people don't feel that it was necessarily time well-spent. But I think the relationship is a good thing to, for us to promote that and to certainly have a better relationship with our representatives. The good news is we don't have a lot in this district, but.
One detail of that, which I think had like come up when we had previous discussions about this topic, was also local government. You know, city council, county board, also, not only are they facing some similar challenges in many ways, but also, you know, there is coordination and awareness of what people are planning on and just kind of making sure that there's open communication between different types of government, right? Make the impression as well. So something to think about, I don't know. It's, I just heard a lot of people talking about how they'd have, you know, they have these, they have these breakfasts or they have these, you know, whatevers. And it's just like, well, maybe that's worth pursuing. And obviously, the recent issue of this board made that not as, not sort of as necessary, right? Because one of our legislators was sitting in his chair. But maybe it's time to kind of revisit that since you don't have that internal connection anymore.
One thing I will add, and I'm not opposed to trying to put something together at some point, even though Clint Bowles is no longer on the school board, he's done a really good job continuing to stay abreast of our local district. You know, sometimes parents can do that better. But I will say Clint regularly reaches out to me when it comes to legislative work that's being done in the area of public education. And he'll commonly reach out, probably about once a month, it averages at least, where we'll sit down and talk about how certain proposals would impact our local school district. So I think some of that is happening. And I can't speak for Clint, but I would assume that he would be willing to, whether it be a breakfast or just whether he gets invited to a school board meeting, I would guess if his schedule made him available, I would think that he would do that.
Yeah, it's good to hear that I'm going to discussion, that's really important.
Thanks.
I'd just like to say, I think this was before your time, Joe, but when Margaret Bryson was on the board, she was very good about setting up legislative breakfasts. And all the legislators came, that were part of the, you know, Dunn County schools. And then all the Dunn County schools, and then Eau Claire also brought their board members in, everything. And it was like a, like breakfast. And then we could ask them questions or they could, you know, hear about what we're doing or, you know. It could be, it could be arranged any way you wanted it. I mean, it could be just where we all talk, share about good things that are happening in our district, so they know. They don't know, we don't tell them. And then, you know, once you, and like you say, build up the relationships and then it's a lot easier to talk about things that may not be as positive about, you know, what's happening with education, so.
One thing board members might want to consider is that in that Wisconsin School News, on page 28, it talks about the 2023 Wasby Day at the Capitol. And I know that in the interview with Luther Olson earlier in the publication, he talked about how beneficial he thought that was because people, you know, both sides were prepared to have some discussions. And, you know, perhaps that would be a good initial step that some people might want to take.
Also, sometimes if the, I know Charlie mentioned that it's hard to get legislators to come. Sometimes their staff is willing to come. It may not be the real person, but at least they have a staff person that's representing their person, so.
I think, I kind of like that idea, have that breakfast, I think that'd be good. And it was interesting in that publication they referred to, Joe, you know, all different ideas and kind of chimed in with our discussion last month. Yeah, I think that breakfast would be a nice addition and a good start to forming relationships. And maybe ask, ask, you know, Clint if that sounds like something that would work. He would buy absolute value, we'll talk about that.
Not that it will be impossible, but it will be more difficult coming in the next few months because they're going to be on the floor a lot more as they debate the budget. The budget address, I believe, is the 15th of February. So they're going to be on the floor quite a bit after that. Be more difficult to get them here, but again, not impossible.
Would you like me to reach out to Clint and see what he thinks might work? Great.
All right, anything else on advocacy? All right. So review the extracurricular staff contract requests.
This is just standing agenda item that comes before the board once a month. Unless there's any questions, it's just for your information.
Any questions, comments? All right, on to items related to next meetings. Thankfully for the snow, the Ranger Night at Wakanda was rescheduled. For those of you that haven't been to that, that's honestly a highlight of my year. So they rescheduled it so we can, so we can go, as we're at the school board events, are able to go. QIC meeting, which we discussed a little bit earlier. And then our board meeting on the 13th. And diversity committee, and then the primary election on the 21st. And then school safety, and then our regular meeting on the 27th.
So Charlie, just a special plug for Ranger Night. What that is, is at Wakanda Elementary School, the students have worked in a long time putting together presentations about different national parks in the United States. And students, they build a little model and then they have a speech that they have prepared. And they have stations set up all around. So it's actually also a fundraiser, there's a chili feed fundraiser. So it's actually this Wednesday, January 25th. It starts at 4:30, goes until 6 o'clock at Wakanda Elementary School. Come check out the students' presentations and bring an appetite for a chili fundraiser.
And I think it's next month or maybe in April, they're doing a Frank Lloyd Wright, very similar event as well. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Any other discussion on the?
Just a question about the committee meetings. I should know this, I realize, but can you remind us, are, can other board members more commonly attend those meetings just to, or are they closed?
Typically, it's just the board members who are appointed, not just for quorum reasons.
All right, any other questions on the upcoming meetings and events? Okay, let's take about a five-minute break and then we'll come back and move into closing.